So we noted here that, you know, all access to our place should be paved. And so I don't think they're going to want to pave like the entire, you know, across the baseball field. Um, so I, I do think that it would make some sense depending on how we come out. Uh, how you come out on the baseball diamond issue to, you know, find a way to restrict access so that you can't access the marijuana facility from the Bowls Road. That Bowls Road curb cut there. Um, there's existing sidewalks along from the property and there are sidewalks along each side of the building. Provided for pedestrian walkway from parking areas to the front of the entrance. Only customer entrance is on the northwest side of the building, so the pedestrian situation is generally adequate there. Item C, the arrangement of public or private, uh, vehicle and pedestrian infections to existing or planned streets in the area shall be provided by the safety and vision circulation cabin. Um, again, no changes to circulation there. We do note that even though the curb cut is existing, this is a change of reason, so that would require a permit for that site. Um, and what we have also done with other applicants along Main Street is that if the planning commission is so inclined, you may require cross access easement to neighboring properties. So that people are going from store to store on, on Main Street, they don't have to continuously plug onto Main Street to access neighboring properties, but you can get through, from site to site without pulling out the main streets, but that is another discussion. Item D, removal and alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas which are reasonably necessary to develop the site in accordance with requirements of the ordinance. And so again, there are no natural features there that are present and that are proposed for, for, for removal. Uh, the applicant has done an excellent job with landscaping plan, I think it'll increase natural features on the site compared to what you have now and maybe exceed the standards of the ordinance. Obviously, we will include or would include maintenance of landscaping buffer and are redeveloped as a condition of approval if you are inclined to approve this. Item E, satisfactory assurance somebody provided the requirements and other applicable ordinances, codes of requirements of city will, will be met. Again, that would be a condition of approval. Uh, and F, the general purposes and spirit of the confidence of plan shall be maintained. C three district purposes to permit a mixture of residential office and commercial uses, but not necessarily in downtown style buildings. Uh, and the purpose of the ordinance is to ensure that uses of land shall be situated in appropriate locations and relationships to limit inappropriate overcutting of land in addition to population transportation systems and public facilities, et cetera, et cetera. You know, overall, I think this is a generally compatible use within this E three district for both zoning ordinance. Uh, in terms of the master plan, two thousand seven plan, uh, shows this property in the mixed use future land use category. Um, inter future land use map has a few different mixed use districts, and so how they develop and how they are designed depends on where they are. So this particularly, this particular category, again, is intended to admit, to permit a mixture of residential office and, and commercial uses, but not necessarily in downtown style buildings. It also emphasizes a pedestrian oriented environment. Um, and so certainly this is a, a, a commercially used, it is permissible in this area. Um, and, you know, and be noted here that you may discuss whether the use could contribute to a pedestrian oriented environment would be compatible with other uses. So those are the site plan review standards. Do you want me to stop?
Uh, yes, for a second here at least. Um, before we go any further, I'd like to invite the public, if we have anybody on the Zoom or anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment. Ma'am, if you would, please come on forward and give us your name and address.
My name is Michelle Williams and I live at seven twenty five Lafayette Street. I have just a, a couple of questions and I'm not sure the best way for those of us that are concerned as residents how to get questions answered. But in the initial meeting, it was indicated by Brian and Zay that they were simply going to remodel the building and become a dispensary with future plans to possibly become a grow facility. Now I'm concerned with adult use and how that's defined.
Andy, can you give us a better definition of that?
Yeah, so when the ordinance talks about adult use marijuana establishments, it's referring to, uh, the, all the, only the marijuana establishments that are, that are prohibited under the law. So retailers, growers, processors, micro businesses, transporters, and there's testing. So those are the, are the five categories of, of marijuana use. So when we say adult use marijuana, that's kind of a formalized term for recreational marijuana.
So as of right now, with all of the recreational facilities we currently have and those that we plan to have, you cannot consume or enjoy the product on the property. That is what this location is intended for, is that correct?
No, 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 no. So this, all of the other, uh, all of the other establishments that it permitted are also adult use marijuana establishments. So none of them would allow someone to consume the product within the store.
Okay, so by adult-
So they don't actually use it there. Adult use means that-
You can buy it and take it home.
Buy it and take it home, you don't use it on the property.
You're not consuming it.
Correct.
That's what I understood this to be. And then I was concerned with, you know, exhausting regulations and odors and, you know, the kids at McDonald's and at the Playland and whatnot. And also, you know, like how they might test impaired drivers as they're leaving the facility. As a parent and a resident, I just want to know that all of these things we're approving are not going to affect our safety or our kids' safety. You know, the kids right now have so little recreational options and I know that we came in at the tail end of what I believe to be the community center discussion. But we're talking about possibly losing bedding cages and ball carts and, you know, having this immediately adjacent to McDonald's. And, you know, what I, what I heard, and I know that it's in the planning stages and that's the whole point of this, but it just doesn't sound to me like this has been well thought out with future details of what their plans are down the road. And that's kind of concerning to me. I'd like to know what they hope to accomplish, what their future plans are, what their goal is with this property, given the fact that they're purchasing it and we've already got so many other dispensaries in the neighborhood. You know, I did some homework and I looked at the number of dispensaries throughout like Colorado, which I believe you guys kind of researched and California and whatnot. I just think, and I understand we can't legally probably limit the number of these businesses that can operate, but I don't see how we can sustain that many dispensaries in our small town. And I'm curious to know how we go about, you know, finding out what the benefits to those of us who live here. I understand there's tax benefits, et cetera, but how will we see those, those positives? Do you guys have any of those details as to how it will positively benefit those of us that live here?
Um, Mike, you want to introduce this one?
Yeah, I can kind of. So one of the issues obviously, we don't exactly know how much revenue we're going to generate.
Sure.
However, the intent is, uh, right now, uh, the intent is aim, uh, we are looking at funding a full-time police detective with the application fees and the increase in the payment in lieu of taxes the city oversees from light and power. That's going to fund a full-time detective, which the police department desperately needs. Um, the other, the remaining portion, we, we are looking at increasing, putting more money into streets. Right now, we transfer about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the general fund to our local street fund. And then after all of our expenses in total from our local street fund, we have about three hundred thousand dollars a year to pay street rent. So it's not a lot of money. This year, we are getting, we are putting the, the twenty eight thousand dollars we received, while it's a drop in the bucket, the money went to local streets.
So the pot shops will fill poples?
That's the intent, I mean, that's our goal. We're going to try as best we can with the money. I mean, if we get more money, the more money we get, the more I can put in local streets. Maybe I can do an extra street, you know, if I'm only doing a street a year, maybe I can do a street and a half. Um, it's all going to be dependent on how the money comes in, but I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to use it towards-
Well, and that's helpful. As a resident, again, it's like, you know, it's hard to look past the negatives when you're not sure what the positives might be. And living here locally, you know, we are paying a good amount in taxes.
I agree, yeah.
And vehicle repairs lately because these streets are so horrible.
Well, we're working on-
And I know I'm not the only one complaining and, you know, and I know that's not the focus, but-
We, we under, I mean, this, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I mean, the city spent a lot of time on this issue two years ago when we put the order, year and a half ago, two years ago, when we put this ordinance in place. I mean, we thought, we thought a lot of these things through, um, and-
Well, and as some of these dispensaries fail, because I, I can't believe they will all succeed. Will there ever be a cap to how many can return or will we just see kind of the revolving door?
The issue with, the issue with putting a cap on, the first time you, you put the cap, the first time somebody doesn't get, say you have, you have some sort of select, you have some sort of selection process, somebody's not going to get selected. They have a defensible legal argument against the city that the city cannot defend.
Yeah, it's like a participation.
So we're going to get sued. Right, so the reason, the way the ordinance was, I mean, you either, your options unfortunately, if you, if you really look at the law, your options are, you need to completely opt out and not allow it, or if you're going to opt in, this is really, this is one, one of the precon, I mean, this is one of the things that, it was something that we actually learned along the way because we were originally going to cap it. That was the plan, but then once we learned, all these cities were getting sued by that, by this, and there's a number of cities right now that are in the state. We didn't want any part of that, so that's how the, that's, and, and the part, the problem is, is that the insurance company will not pay the judgment against you if you lose. So, um, the city would be paying that. So that's why it was set up the way it was.
What determined their location? Like, it's my understanding that they can't come any farther east than, is it Speedway?
So we kept it, no, we kept, our requirements are, obviously residential neighborhoods, we don't allow them. Um, thousand feet from schools, five hundred feet away from the downtown. So the C, C two district is the downtown. We allow, we don't allow facilities within five hundred feet of the downtown. We don't allow facilities a thousand feet from a school or preschool.
Now, is there no longer-
But it has to be in the C three zoning district.
Okay. Is there some longer a concern with this particular facility being directly across from the church?
We're going to talk about that.
Okay, okay. So that's still being discussed?
Right.
All right, I think those were the questions that I had. I was just kind of surprised that it was my understanding that this was going to be an adult use facility. And I didn't know how that, you know, was different than the dispensaries and the retailer.
Yeah, adult use is, it, it compounds all the terminologies and like when you hear recreational, recreation was actually adult use, but it, it, it compounds all the facilities that he talked about. But none of the facilities actually allowed, um, using on, on site. We are not, we are not, we are not allowing that.
It's not a, it's not a smokehouse, they can't do it there.
See, now that was my understanding that that's what this was intended to be.
No, 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 nope.
Okay. And to purchase, you have to be twenty-one or older?
That's correct.
Okay.
And you, you also should know too, that if they don't abide, and there's, if there's a complaint for a smell or whatever, they have a very short window to correct these problems or we can pull them-
Yeah, there is a very, our ordinance is very restrictive into what they can and cannot do. If they do not meet the terms of the ordinance, there's going to be very little, um, tolerance for that, so they will only-
Well, that's good to know. I, you know, I live with someone whose likelihood depends on their ability to pass random drug tests. And in his job, he has to call in a number of these facilities. And honestly, there are a number of them that he leaves in hopes that he doesn't get called for a random drug test in the next few days. And so I'm just looking at it from a safety standpoint and trying to protect our children and trying to understand why we need so many of them, but from a legal standpoint, that makes sense.
That's, that's the best explanation I can give here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody on Zoom that's requesting to speak?
If so, star nine, if you're on a dial, or raise your hand.
Okay, I do not see any. Okay, looking at the, um, site plan review standards. Um, commissioners, do you want to take these one at a time? Do you want to do them all together or how do you, how would you prefer to do it? Is there preference?
No, I, I like the way we, why don't we just do them all at once?
I'd like to break off A myself. And I'm, I'm finally doing B through F together.
Okay.
And my, I guess my question, and I'm going to raise a question before I make a motion to do anything along that line, but my, my question is, is on A, um, the will not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare and uses of structures located in the site. Shall we plan to take into account size and property, the uses of adjoining properties in their relationship? And that, that gets back to that question with the ball field, the training site, uh, McDonald's for that matter. I mean, you know, the, the neighborhood, I guess, uh, the church across the street, all of those things, um, bring you to the question, does this materially affect, um, does that affect?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, I think, community perception allows it does because we're going to, you know, McDonald's is by and ends a school, but it's got the whole family Playland thing and all that on the front end of it. And to have it nestled next to a baseball diamond, it's like this one is intangibly different than just putting in a pot shop in front of, you know, any old family time video or whatever. That's, uh, seemed, it does seem different, but I don't really see how we restrict it because it, it meets the standards of the zoning criteria. I mean, this, this is an intent, this, it's good to break this off and discuss it because it is an intangible, you know, perhaps it doesn't meet the criteria, but it's, meets all the other standards, so I don't really, it's a judgment call on that, you know?
Can, can we, can we make, uh, I'm going to make a suggestion that we go through the entire process here. But I'd also make the suggestion that we table it until the, the parties, and Andy can come back with a solution or a possible solution to the ball field and separating that and, and how we can do that. And, and with that, I, I'm more than willing to go ahead.
I think you're really, I, who's really using that too? Like, if it's, we're really meaning to build schools to, for-
I'm pretty sure it's not being mentioned by the school.
Well, I don't think it's a school. I think it's a, like Mike said, a federation or a junior cult league or something along that line. I, I, I mean, I get it, but it's still-
Yeah, it's still a school.
Students, as far as I'm concerned. And I gotta believe the training facility is mostly students.
But wouldn't we be, wouldn't it more to have those interested people leave?
Yeah, well, that's what, that's what I'm saying is, is that we can go through the process here of everything. We just don't okay if we simply put it on.
So, uh, one suggestion I would make then is that I'm fine with this approach, but, and we can go through the rest of, of the standards, but don't vote on them until you get this thing, because once you, hypothetically speaking, if you vote, you know, yes on all these and no on, and, uh, yeah, no on some, some of the next ones, you're kind of stuck. So if you want to go, go, go through these for the purpose of your deliberation, I think that's fine, but I would not hold off on making that vote. Because once you voted yes, you need these, and yes, you need these, and yes, you need these, then you ought to approve it. And so if you're on the fence about some things, then, you know, hold off on making those judgments until you have the information that you need.
As it says here, um, site plan review standards, in order to approve a site plan, the planning commission must find that each of the standards listed in section eighteen oh six.
Yes, so-
So I mean, you know, if we don't agree with A, the whole thing is bad. My, my point is, is I, I, I'm not sure that I, I don't agree with A, but I think that we need to go through the rest of the plan and get some answers from the applicant and the general public and, and reexamine this.
Your zoning ordinance for these review standards says, calling standards shall be utilized by the planning commission in, in redoing all site plans. These are intended to provide a plate, a frame of reference for the applicant in the preparation of site plans as well as for the review authority and the judgment concerning them. These standards shall not be regarded as inflexible requirements. They are not intended to discourage creativity, invention, or innovation. On that said, if after re, reviewing and considering A, if you think that it would adversely affect the public health, self, health, safety, and welfare, then obviously that's a potential justification for, you know, finding one way or the other.
Uh, Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion? For the sake of time, um, it sounds to me like we want to review these and table these to a later, later date. I just checked with Susie, um, your next agenda, your next meeting, right now, there's really nothing on the agenda.
Right.
Maybe the best thing would be, is maybe to table the matter completely tonight and then, for the sake of time, we're after nine o'clock and we're probably going to get another hour going through, through the next one. Maybe we just table it and address it at the next meeting.
Except, except for the fact that if we go through the rest of the standards here, if there's anything that stands out, the applicant would have the time to prepare those answers.
Okay.
That, that's my, that's my concern.
That's fine, I just wanted to bring that-
I'm fine with just saying, let's table the, um, these standards, uh, the special, or, where am I going?
Special land use?
Yeah.
Bottom of page six.
Uh, site plan review standards. Let's just, we'll, we'll table that and then we'll go on to special land use review standards. And we'll, we'll go through them and we don't have to take a vote and then we'll table it until the next one. At which point, both the applicant and Andy can come back with some thoughts. And that, that gives us a little bit more time to put that whole thing kind of back together. Okay. Andy, you want to go on then with special land use review standards?
Yes. So special land use standards of section seventeen point zero three, we'll go through those, just like we did before.
Sure.
First one, the proposed special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. The section will not change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed. So, uh, again, we note here that there's not major change to, to the building's exterior. They're proposing use twenty-two hundred square feet of the existing building. Site access and circulation would be generally the same. So the design in relationship of the building and the site to neighboring properties in terms of, you know, design and, and appearance would likely remain harmonious and appropriate in appearance. Um, we talked about already the, that driveway on Bowls Road, so I don't know if we need to go through, through that again, but, you know, I think some kind of, that hasn't been addressed as we discussed.
Yes.
Uh, and B, with regard to the master plan, we've talked about that additionally as well. Um, it's in the, it makes the use future use category, which permits a variety of uses. Generally speaking, we think that this is consistent with that designation, um, as it permits this, this type and size and form of building in this district. Item C, proposed special land use shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police, fire, drainage, et cetera. Um, so utility connections are present on the site. Um, and it's because they're just, they're, at this time are proposed in only a, uh, a retail operation. The use of utilities is expected to be comparable to a otherwise, you know, similar to a normal retailer. Other facilities, um, you know, streets are adequately provided to, to, to the site.
Andy, at the bottom there, I see, um, drainage, stormwater drainage on the site and things of that nature. Um, that's something that you can look at, you know?
Yep. Yeah, and again, they're not, um, increasing a lot of improved service on the site, so you don't have huge concerns along those lines, but we, we, we will check that as well. Um, item D, the proposed special land use should not create excessive additional requirements at public house for public facilities or services. Um, you know, again, they've, uh, this is a fairly limited operation in terms of the size and scale. They have submitted a security plan to mitigate additional requirements for police services. And obviously, these types of applications go through review and scrutiny by the police department as well as, and, and the fire department and other state departments to ensure that adequate public facilities can be provided. Item E, the proposed special land use should not involve uses activities, processes, materials, and equipment or conditions of operation. It will be detrimental to any person's property or the channel of welfare by reasons of excessive production of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, fire, or odors. Um, again, so, uh, this would be a, um, you know, there'd be no, uh, drilling, no manufacturing, no processing on the site, only retail. Um, we noted here as well that the traffic might be higher on the site, given what's happened at some of the other facilities, although that might go down over time. Um, and where these facilities pop up here, moving into other locations throughout west Michigan. Uh, the proposed parking arrangement does in our view accommodate the, you know, likely or potential increase in traffic that may result on a property. Um, however, you as a planning commission have an option to request a traffic study for something like this, uh, if you are so inclined. And the last standard F would be that if applied with all federal state and local requirements and copy of all applicable permits shall be submitted to the city. They're surely on track to do that so far, they have their provisional licenses and pre-qualification status obtained from the state. And that would be obviously a condition of approval moving forward. Questions or want me to keep going?
Keep going.
Okay. So the last section here are the, uh, use specific requirements for adult use marijuana establishments. Um, so section B, we talked about separation distances. Um, and this is what we were talking about earlier with the woman who's here from, from the public. So we have an isolation radius of a thousand feet from a preschool or child center, thousand feet from a public or private kindergarten school, and five hundred feet from the C two district. So it is not within a thousand feet of the C two district, and did it give, give us a map that shows where these, where the schools are? Um, you know, we noted here that a letter was received on behalf of the Calvary Christian Reformed Church. Uh, and they state that, uh, a, a, a school called Classical Conversations of Lowell operates on the church every Monday from eight to three, through three thirty, I'm sorry, during, during the school year. Um, and so while it looks like these sessions have some educational value for students, we don't think that that would constitute a school for the purposes of this ordinance. Um, and so, you know, moving forward, we think that, you know, given, um, you know, how we've read the ordinance and how we've interpreted the, the term school, that, you know, while we respect their position, we disagree that that would constitute a school. So in, in our view, this is not within a thousand feet of a school. It does not within five hundred feet of the C two district unless it satisfies the isolation radius requirements for these establishments. Item C, odors. Um, so this requires, and we've been through this several times, um, you know, air scrubbing, carbon filtration, and negative air pressure, things like that. Basically, we want them to make sure that we aren't, uh, discharging undesirable odors into the neighborhood. Uh, they have provided an air, air quality plan, which details measures for odor mitigation. This includes negative air pressure indoors through an exhaust fan. Uh, and they're opposing, um, negative building static, an OPECometer, daily scheduled monitoring, and an ozone generator. Replacement filters would be designated by a calibrated sensor, sensor omni test equipment. Um, this is all submitted with their application narrative and supporting documentation. Uh, they didn't specify, talk about the closure of windows and doors, which is required by the ordinance, but that's something that they would be required to do anyways. And if there are other odor mitigation, uh, concerns, we consider to talk about those, but as a retailer, um, the concern is usually not as, as significant as it is for processors or perro operations. Item D, the establishment should be operated and maintained at all times so that any byproducts or waste shall be properly and often accepted and disposed of so as to the risk of any harm to the public health, safety, or welfare. It did submit a waste disposal plan that provides details for waste and disposal in accordance with stated local laws. Uh, this makes, this includes them, you know, rendering it unrecognizable through grinding and incorporating it with at least sixty percent of non-marijuana waste. They have to make it, you know, useless basically. Uh, they have a system of keeping a record of waste through something called D-Logics, uh, and a waste disposal log. And they also show a dumpster along East from property boundary. Um, uh, the sheet also indicates the enclosure plan gate, which would be a concrete wall on a cedar board gate. Um, I'm assuming that would be locked, uh, but it doesn't say, so that would be something, again, it's, um-
Check on, you know?
Yeah, again, it's, it's not something that is a great concern. These are typically locked, locked structures here. That, that would be the only thing to, to confirm there. Uh, E prohibits the establishment from being operated out of a residence or any building used wholly or partially for residential purposes. And there is no proposed residential use on this property. Item F, a portion or energy used- Item F, a portion or energy uses in C typical residential use, such as a gru room, uh, would have to be, would be subject to inspection and approval by the fire department to ensure compliance with the required codes, fuels for lasers, et cetera, must be sort of nicely secured and locked area. Um, they're not proposing any growing, uh, their safety data sheet they submitted with the application, and if G is the only hazardous substance onsite would be leach, um, so there's nothing, uh, significant there for us to concern ourselves with. G prohibits an marijuana establishment from operating from a location that also sells alcohol or tobacco, which is not proposed, drive-through facilities are, are not permitted, or are they proposed at standard F. Item I requires compliance at all times and all circumstances with the MRTMA, uh, and the rules promulgated thereunder, um, which would be addressed as a condition of approval. The planning commission may require additional landscape buffer or screening beyond what is required in four point two six. So, this is a, here in case, uh, for certain establishments, the planning commission is inclined to, uh, require more intense landscaping for some reason, uh, you can do that, so, um, you know, this fence that you can kick around between the ballpark and the bill, and, and the building was certainly qualified under this kind of a screening provision here, so that's something that, uh, you can.
J is the area that needs to be fleshed out.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you want to provide them with some guidance, I think that would be helpful for them, if, if, you know, if the fence isn't desirable, I think it would be helpful for the applicant to do that. Um, or if you have some other proposal, you know, that would also probably, I mean, they're gonna want some guidance, I'm guessing, from you.
Any, any thoughts on that, commissioners?
No, not till we find out what the, the hoon lie of the back of that, you know, I mean, we tell them the, the fence up.
Some separation somehow.
Yeah.
And whether or not it's.
But it's, it's fences, it green spaces, it, what I mean, so.
Exactly.
I think until you know what's going on, or the hoes, what's going on back there.
I think they have to say, if you're gonna use the field, this leaves us to play, it's either get rid of the field or put a barrier up that you separate the two, two perhaps, you know.
Yeah, I, 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 I think that's something Andy will have to work out with them.
Right.
Yeah.
I think they have to make a decision, do they wanna keep the field or not?
Right.
I mean, this thing, that's not gonna be up to me, I don't think, this is.
Right. But, I mean, the, the, working through on the proposal coming back as.
Sure. It's kinda like, if you have a playground, you either gotta separate it or you gotta get rid of it.
Yeah.
And you can't have a child attracted.
Right, there.
On your property if you're gonna have an adult.
Right, okay. So, we're all in consensus that J is something that needs to be worked out, and also, I, I wrote down here real quickly hours of operation, I don't know that we ever really put it in, but we've done the same hours for everybody else, except for.
Well, yeah, ex, except for one, so, the hours of operation are spelled out in the city's, uh, police department ordinance, so my suggestion would be to go with what is in the, in the, in the city's police department ordinance, we don't introduce a conflict.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I had maybe as mentioned in the conditions or whatever.
Well, we'll have a condition that they comply with the city's ordinance as anyways, and they'll have to, that'll be on there for when they get their operating license at the end of the process, assuming they make it that far. Uh, item K, the owner or licensee shall maintain clear and adequate records, documentation demonstrating that all cannabis and cannabis products have been maintained from and are provided to other permitted to license cannabis operations, cities have the right to examine, monitor, audit such records and documentation. Um, they have proposed to keep inventory records through LEAP Logix and metric. Um, they have an inventory control and record-keeping plan they submitted, the states of products would be only acquired from licensed retail, or licensed marijuana facilities. Um, for accepting a delivery, they propose that everything is accurately labeled, tracked by metric, any issues are registered out before the product is accepted. Um, as a condition of approval, uh, is for to approve it at some future meeting, uh, you may include the right to examine, monitor, and audit such records and documentation as a condition. Item L, necessary building electrical plumbing and mechanical permits shall be obtained for any portion which contains electrical wiring, lighting, watering devices, et cetera. Um, there will be no roaming or harvesting on the site, so this standard is not applicable in our view than the last one. In event of any conflict, the terms of this ordinance are preempted and the controlling order, authority shall be dispatched for regulations set forth by the MRTMA and the adopted rules, which would also be addressed as a condition of approval. So, those are the marijuana-specific standards, um, so after this would be, again, so if you're inclined to postpone the decision for the next meeting, um, that would be the time for that deliberation and eventual motion.
Uh, commissioners, I think, uh, I'll, I'll make a motion that we postpone, um, the, uh, destroy how we've, uh, public hearing until the, uh, maybe, uh, on, uh, further reflection with our, uh, Williamsburg folks.
Nice, can you, uh, before you guys, I don't know if I'm, I'm able to, I try to raise my hand here, it's, can I?
Sure.
Add a couple things?
Sure.
Can you guys know where I'm at? So, I've, I've had this property for several months now, paying money on it monthly, and I'm not closing on it until I get approved, um, for what I intend to use it for. Um, I don't want my generosity by allowing the baseball field being used to postpone this another month, 'cause that'd just mean losing a lot more money and wasting more time to get open. Um, I will not let anyone use that baseball field if it's gonna cause any guys an issue, so I can make that, I can make that determination right now on that property and say it's not gonna be used at all. If you guys would like me to do that, I can, I'm not doing it, uh, I just wanna, I just don't want, I cannot afford to keep waiting another month for something that I did not come here, I just intended to get this two thousand, twenty-seven hundred square foot building approved for a, um, adult-use marijuana facility. And if that baseball diamond, I, I understand, 'cause I, you spoke about it, about, you know, I don't mind a team using it, but I don't know what kind of team is using it, if it's a high school, if it's an adult team, I don't know that answer, um, but if it's gonna cause me any kind of delay, I will just, um, you know, come to you guys and ask for, Chicago, I'll just make a decision now that no one's using it, and if someone does want to use it, if they do approach me as a, like, the owner of the property, then I will then consider it. Um, and then, if you guys would like me to consider it and speaking with you guys about it before a decision is made, but I don't think it should affect why I'm here, just thinking, I'm here to stick it up, my adult-use marijuana facility approved. And then I'm, you know, in jeopardy of losing the property because I have to close before you guys are gonna, if I have to wait until next month, um, I'm gonna be in jeopardy of not closing and then me getting sued for not closing. So, I just, um, you know, I have that going on, so I just want, I don't want that baseball diamond in my generosity saying you guys, you know, a team can use it, that's kinda lies me. Um, that's all I ask, but, um, yeah, I, I just want your opinion on what you, what you think I should do there. Um, and, you know, again, I have a risk of losing a lot of money, also I have a risk of reaching contract, um, and these delays, if they were like delay, a week delay, we can go with it, but if it's a wait till the whole next month, I discuss it again, and I've been at work since eight o'clock and I haven't left since nine-thirty, and then I got, I, it's hard for me to go back to my group, is it a table that, because we're being generous and saying they can use the baseball diamond?
Also, if I may interject, um, if you guys do table until next month, um, Mr. Thomas' partner may not have a decision for that diamond, you're basically asking him to give you an idea or a decision as to what they're gonna do with that two-point-five acres in the back. Even if they were the owners today, they may not have an idea as to what they were gonna do with that property, whether they were splitting it, selling it off, or, um, keep the baseball diamond, or put a fence across, or build another building. We're simply asking for the approval, if we're meeting all the requirements, from what Andy was saying, it seems like we are, for the approval on the other side of the street, two acres away. I understand that the baseball diamond and the law sporting facility is all encompassing and part of the entire parcel, but neither is the other ten thousand square feet that's gonna remain empty, and no one has raised any issue about that. The part that we, we spoke about possibly making it to a grow or processing one day, possibly, or possibly leasing out to someone else one day, we're just basically asking for the two thousand square feet, like I said, completely on the other side of the property, nothing to do with what we're asking for. So, again, if you table and we come back next weekend, we have met all the requirements, we may still not have an answer in regards to that baseball diamond.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any thoughts? I'll still make a motion that we should table it until the, uh, we. Do I have a second?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, their decision, right, if you're gonna buy a property, they wanna be the nice guys and let her keep using the baseball diamond, that's great, but it's a piece of property that has a baseball diamond on it and they've got some difficult decisions to make in the future, it's not, I mean, that's, that's what it is, it's a, you know, so, um, it's not up to us in terms of standing in the way of the purchase of the property. I think everyone's on the same page that no one wants kids around, uh, adult-use marijuana facility, and they're talking about communicating that and making sure no one's using it, if that's their, you know, so that's, maybe that's the starting point, and then you can go down the road further in the future and save the use of the diamond somehow by working with them, but you can't really stand in the way of purchasing the property without causing them, uh.
Well, then, do we wanna continue with the, uh, just accepting the standards and the recommendations?
Yeah, 'cause I'm with Colin on this, I mean, how are you gonna, you know, and like he said, they don't have a clue, they might not have a clue, and then what, we're right back to the same boat, we're gonna push it out, push it up, push it up, no. I think they understand the concerns and I, I truly believe that, uh, they will try to do right for the community.
Well, I think you make a statement, like, right, you're buying, you buy the property, no one's using the baseball diamond until further discussion, kind of, you know, and there's a way to, like, let them get the property.
Make a statement.
And then work, and then work.
Probably say, until further decisions are made.
Yeah.
Don't use the baseball diamond.
Yeah, and that's the, like they said, that's the decision that helps them get the property is, is that's it. Congratulate, don't use the baseball diamond.
Yeah, we're very cute, very, very, and then we can just move on and hopefully we can work it out.
Okay. Then, uh, the first order of business then would be to do the site plan review standards A through, um, F. Do I have a motion to accept the standards A through F?
Should I table it?
Under site plan review standards?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
And support?
Support.
And discussion? Sue, uh, we'll call both, please.
Is it Alice that supported?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
No. Uh, the second one on the special land use review standards, uh, again, A through F, do I have a motion to accept those standards?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
And discussion? There is no discussion, Sue, would you please do a, a vote?
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Um, adult-use marijuana establishment, special land use standards, um, B, as it is, through, there's several pages here, A. B through M. As it runs up. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the adult-use marijuana establishment, uh, special land use standards?
Make motion.
And support?
Oh, support.
And discussion?
Mr. Chair, would this be the time, uh, to make the, a finding, um, regarding the letter that was received earlier?
I know it is. Oh, right. Um, then we've had a motion made and then we wanna add in, the, uh, planning commission acknowledges the receipt of a letter from Calgary Christian Reformed Church, however, disagrees with their conclusion that the use described constitutes a school for purposes of the administration of section seventeen point oh four, uh, FF five B. And instead relies on its reading of the plain language, he understood and attended the city council and the reasonable opinion of the city's professional plan and finds the applic, application to be compliant. So, again, having said that, is there any further discussion on the adult-use marijuana establishment, special land use standards? Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Therefore, I will make, uh, a motion for the, uh, special land use, site plan review, or geology with the, uh, conditions of one through twenty, I believe it is?
Correct.
Um, that we accept, uh, those recommendations for use. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
That's hard.
And is there any discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Uh, the, uh, geology then has their special land use and, um, or, for the property. Next, uh, order of business is the.
Thank you, everyone.
Sure, thank you. Is a new, uh, new business, a public hearing for twenty forty West Main, B and D Asset Recovery, Special Land Use. Andy, might run a foot?
Yes, so this is a, so the use they are proposing here is a commercial storied warehouse, it's located on one-point-two acres in the C three business district, so, uh, it is just to the, uh, west of the, uh, manufactured housing community, they're proposing a seventeen thousand six hundred square foot pre-engineered metal, metal building on the site. Uh, the use includes reclaiming and disassembling electronic equipment for recycling and reused parts would be stored within the building and before being shipped elsewhere. So, the commercial storied warehouse is defined as a building or buildings used primarily as a commercial business for the storage of goods and materials, and is permitted by special land use within the C three district, and then as some of you know, uh, this was on the agenda for the city's, uh, order zoning appeals on February one, and they, and they received a rear yard setback variance, reduced a required rear yard that we don't have sell, uh, from thirty-five feet to fifteen feet. Uh, we have a complete application from the applicant, um, and walking through a few of the site.